Happy Crow. Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of October 24th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Murray, would you please take call?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Summerfield? Absent. Commissioner Voight?
Good evening, glad to be here.
Chairperson Fox?
Here.
We have corner of the Planning Commission. We also have President Township Planning, Dave Campbell.
All right, thank you. Next up, item four, approval of the meeting agenda.
I move to approve the meeting agenda for October 24th for the Heartland Township Planning Commission.
Support.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Grissom. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those name motion carries. Item five, call of the public. Since we have none, we'll move on to item six. This is a public hearing for zoning amendment ordinance, amendment application number 355. Our order of business this evening will be planning director comments. If anybody shows, we'll have some public comments, we'll close the public hearing, and then the Planning Commission can do their question and comments at that time. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:02 PM for the applicant Heartland Township, zoning amendment application number 355, with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment 76-3A through K addressing the following issues. 3.1 and 4.57 updating financial drive-through provisions. 3.1, remove duplicate terms for medical clinics and research facilities. 3.1 clarifying references to community facilities objectives, community facilities objectives contained in the PD District Regulations. 4.3 and 4.4 clarifying temporary building provisions. 4.5 incorporate cross-references for sand gravel and/or mineral extraction operations. 2.2, 3.1, 4.58, 4.59, 4.6, and 5.8 add provisions for automobile fueling and convenience stations. 2.2, 3.1, 3.24, 4.20, 4.28, 4.31, 4.4. Lot of them here. 4.55 revised road references to create consistency with the comprehensive plan. 4.28 and 5.8 reduce stacking for fast food drive-through restaurants. 4.15 and 4.38 clarify automobile or vehicle dealers and open-air business, commercial outdoor displays, sales, and storage provisions. 5.7 clarify dumpster enclosure screening references. And for the record, all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. And with that, I think we will turn it over to our planning director, Dave Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening. So as you've mentioned, what we have this evening is a series of 11 amendments to the zoning ordinance. This is the second of three rounds of zoning ordinance amendments that we hope to get done this year, or hopefully by early next year. The first round was completed and adopted by the Township Board in August, and this, what you have in front of you tonight constitutes round two. Round two has 11 amendments, as I mentioned. These amendments have been through two rounds of review with the Ordinance Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of this Planning Commission, and also came before the full Planning Commission on September 26th for your review. Both with the Ordinance Review Committee meetings and with our Planning Commission meeting on September 26th, staff got a lot of great feedback on these amendments, and we've done everything to incorporate that feedback and make the changes that the Ordinance Review Committee and the Planning Commission requested. So the 11 amendments you have in front of you, we hope, are what you hope to see as this, these amendments went through the review process. Having said all that, that these amendments have been, have gone through a certain level of scrutiny, I may go through them relatively quickly, since everyone has had the benefit of seeing them at least a couple times, but we'll certainly pause and answer any questions you may have as we go. So the, the package of amendments is ordinance amendment 76-3, and then the 11 individual amendments are A through K. So 76-3A has to do with drive-through service for financial institutions. What we've done here is we've tried to create consistency and uniformity for the drive-through service use provisions as they pertain to different zoning districts, so that if you're allowed to have a drive-through bank in any particular zoning district, the, the number of drive-through service lanes that you're allowed to have is consistent across the zoning districts in which they're allowed. Previously, some districts allowed two, some allowed three, some allowed three with an ATM. There was a lot of variation there, and we didn't see any justification for why, so we've tried to make it uniform and say you can have four drive-through lanes, and those lanes can be full-service lanes, they can be ATM lanes, they can be some combination thereof. But if a drive-through service bank is allowed in a particular zoning district, it can have up to four drive-through lanes. And like I said, have me pause at any time if there's any questions on any of these. 76-3B is, is fairly simple, and it's a clarification to remove some duplicative terms within three zoning districts. Essentially, medical clinics and research facilities are mentioned twice as a use that's permitted in the research and development, the light industrial and the industrial districts. So in an effort to clarify, we've, we've removed that duplicative language. 76-3 is another clarification. Right now, within the criteria for a plan development, one of the criteria is that the plan development must be consistent with communities, facilities, objectives contained within the Township's comprehensive plan. Well, community facilities objectives isn't language that's specifically stated in the comprehensive plan, so what we wanted to do here is make it more general and just say that a plan development must be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, which we think serves the same intent, but is, is more of a clear and concise reference. Moving on to proposed amendment 76, number 3-D. Another clarification, this one having to do with temporary buildings. Right now, section 4.4 states that all temporary buildings shall be subject to the Township's special event ordinance, but then it goes on to say except for these. And so we wanted to add some language within that, within that section to make it clear that unless separate standards are provided herein, any other temporary building must be subject to the Township's special events ordinance. So again, a clarification. And also, within that same section four, some language stating that permits for a temporary dwelling are approved by the zoning administrator and not the Planning Commission, which is how we, we do it, and the zoning ordinance just needs to be updated to reflect that.
Can I ask a question here?
Yes, sir.
I see a, or his or her designee.
Hmm?
And can you explain the reason for that a little bit?
If ever for some reason there is not a zoning administrator, either in that position or available to make that determination, the zoning administrator could designate another person to make that.
Is there a process for that internally?
Um.
How to designate somebody to make that call in your state?
I don't know that there is a process in place, but there, there certainly should be and can be.
I would recommend it.
Yeah. Anything else on letter D? Moving on to 76-3E. So right now in the zoning ordinance, there's use standards within Article 4 pertaining to new sand gravel mineral extraction operations, but then there's also language within Article 7 having to do with existing non-conforming extraction operations. And so what we propose to do within section 4.5 is to say that unless you have a pre-existing non-conforming extraction operation that would be ruled by Article, or section 7.25, here are the standards for a new sand and gravel extraction operation. So essentially a cross-reference, so that if, if, if the, the person interested is interested in an existing non-conforming mineral operation, they know where to go beyond the section that pertains to a new operation. 76-3F. So this one is a fairly significant change. Right now in the zoning ordinance, there is no language that defines or has use standards for what, what I think most of us would consider today's conventional gas station, convenience store, or service station, something like, like our Speedway, where they have gas, they have a convenience store with, with the coffee and the soda and, and, you know, some, some small grocery items. The language that's in the zoning ordinance now describes the, the gas station model where there's, there's the fueling pumps and maybe a small retail shop, but then also the service bays where you can also go in and get your tune-up, get your tires rotated, get your oil changed, that kind of thing. We, what we wanted to do is create a new definition for automobile fueling and convenience station to address what we consider to be kind of the conventional model for a gas station, create a new definition for it, say which zoning districts it is allowed within, and also create new use standards for what a, what that use would need to be required to do in order to, to get approved, the use standards for that model of, of gas station. There's also definitions existing currently in the zoning ordinance for automobile repair major and automobile repair minor, but the zoning ordinance as it currently stands doesn't have any real good use standards for those types of uses. The, what we see as automobile repair minor is the place where like a Midas or a bell tire or a Jiffy Lube, where it's a same-day type of service, you know, oil changes, entire rotations, relatively quick services, as opposed to an automobile repair major where you're getting bodywork done, or you're getting your engine overhauled, or something where your car's going to be in there for a, a number of days potentially. So we wanted to make it clear where the automobile repair minor, major and minor will be permitted, in which zoning districts it will be permitted, and then create new use standards for those major and minor automobile repair that would pertain to the zoning districts where they are permitted. And I know we spent some time on this one with the Planning Commission on, on our meeting on the 26th, and we made some changes to those use standards in particular. As I recall, we made some changes as they pertain to screening requirements and outdoor displays, and we think we've incorporated those changes in the, in the version of the ordinance that you have here tonight. Given the, the amount of change that this one, this particular one entails and the amount of effort that we put into it, I'll pause on that one to see if there's any questions or if we missed anything, or if there's anything we want to, to add while, while we're here this evening.
Well, I, I just have a comment. I didn't make that meeting when you guys discussed this at length, and so I'd just like to ask the members of the commission who were on that committee, are you guys satisfied with the language as presented today?
Yes.
Larry, are you on that committee?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was just looking at, there was a, a question that Chairman Fox brought up about the groundwater protection at that last meeting, do you remember?
Well, I didn't have, now that you mention it, I didn't have it in my notes, and I checked this to my notes that I had written at the last meeting.
So it seemed to me that the question was that it needed to be carried through. I mean, it's in the automobile fueling ones, and I thought that, I thought it was like bell tire, or maybe the oil change place also had to provide that type of thing to us before.
Actually, bell tire did, I believe.
And I don't know that, that.
Is it number 10 what you're looking for there, Larry?
Yeah, number 10.
It's in major.
It's in.
Oh, okay.
The convenience fueling station, is it in major? I was looking.
It's in major, or I'm sorry, no, it's not. It's in the fueling convenience store one.
Yeah, right.
As I recall, and if this is the case, then it's an oversight on our part, the, the idea was to have that carry through to automobile repair major and minor. We'll absolutely make sure that gets included.
Under major, there is number three, which is trying to address it. Is that another issue, or is that where you were trying to cover it? You talking about grading?
No, the.
I know you look for the groundwater, but it's. He's correct, he brought it up. I, you know, I went back to my notes and I, when I checked this one, and I must have not written it down while you were bringing it up. I think we intended it to be carried over into the other two, Dave.
Okay. Get that handled.
Yeah, it was actually a project we brought up when AutoZone came in, because we were concerned about the chemicals inside that building. It was ever fire there where that runoff would take place, more than just fueling services and automotive services, really.
Any others on that one? And we'll certainly, yeah, make that change. But I think we got the others as they pertain to screening.
You did, those were the ones I had in my notes.
Is the screening in the major?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Starts at the bottom of the page, the outdoor storage, there shall be screened.
It must not identify separately as screening like the other one is.
Correct.
The minor and the fueling convenience has it separately. Anything else on that one for Dave?
76-3G was another one that required quite a bit of effort and a lot of input from the Ordinance Review Committee and from the Planning Commission. Essentially, the zoning ordinance as it is today has a lot of different references to various types of roads, some of which are definitions that, or classifications that are defined in our comprehensive plan, some of which are not. So the intent of this amendment is to create consistency with our road classifications as they're defined in the comprehensive plan. The classifications that are in the comprehensive plan are actual official designations from the Federal Highway Administration, and, but we have terminology in the zoning ordinance currently that are not defined terms. So what we tried to do is, one, create a definition, or carry over all those definitions from the comprehensive plan to the zoning ordinance. So where you see these new definitions for principal arterials, minor, major collector, minor collector, those are definitions that were, that are drawn directly from the Township's comprehensive plan. And then we also created a new definition for a major thoroughfare. We've got a lot of use standards in the zoning ordinance that says this particular use must be located along a major thoroughfare, but nowhere in our zoning ordinance, as it stands today, do we define a major thoroughfare. So part of what we're doing here is creating that definition. And then we also did a, a pretty intensive kind of a search and destroy mission, where we went through the entire zoning ordinance and found every reference to road, street, arterial, collector, any different variety of road classifications that we could come up with, to make sure that the, that they're used properly and that they're, they're used in such a way that there is a definition for them. So we, the ones that you see where we're making a change in the various use standards for the various zoning districts are the ones where the definition or the classification that exists now doesn't have a definition, so we're making an adjustment so that the terminology is consistent with the definitions that we're adding to the zoning ordinance and the definitions that already exist in the comprehensive plan. And when we brought this to the Planning Commission on the 26th, I know we spent a fair amount of time discussing enhancing the language for hospitals and for recreation facilities. I hope that what staff has done is consistent with what the Planning Commission had in mind, and that we've, we've addressed this issue sufficiently. Any questions on that one?
The only question I have, and I know the, the shared commercial driveway was a result of long discussion that we had here on the 26th. Is there any thought that there'd be a commercial driveway that wasn't shared and that would cause you a problem in the future?
No, because then I, I think that would then default back to direct access onto a major thoroughfare.
Okay.
If you have a, if you have a private driveway that only serves your one commercial property, then that's your direct access.
Okay.
I know we talked about the different outdoor and indoor recreations and making them the same, and then I remember having a conversation about the service drive. Did, did we decide we wanted them to be identical or not? They're, they're a little different still, but I know we had conversations at some point about service drive that evening, and I don't recall if it was while we were talking about the recreational facilities, because we talked about parallel to the road and perpendicular. The difference between the two is that, is that.
One says service.
Service by a service drive is on the indoor recreation and it's not on the outdoor recreation. It's the only difference between the two.
My, my recollection is we essentially wanted those provisions to be identical.
That was mine.
So if I can make a recommendation, it would be to add service drive to the outdoor recreation.
Even could, yeah, word the sentence as identical when you do that.
Do we?
They're not quite identical right now. They have the same words now, but they're not in the same order.
So that would limit your indoor recreation to not in a, in a plan development such as the Meyer or the Walmart then? Because if there was an opportunity for one inside of those developments, it would prohibit that.
Indoor recreation.
Because it doesn't have direct access to a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, unless accessed by a service drive.
Well, so you want to add that.
We want to add it, we want to add it.
Well, you're not broken.
We don't want to limit them, we want to say service drives are a good thing.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Didn't we talk about the definition of the service drive too, with anything at one point it was perpendicular versus parallel?
We did.
Is that addressed? Is it by definition, or?
Yeah, both terms are defined in our definition section currently.
Okay, right.
But.
So what we're going to be doing is adding a definition for the shared commercial drive.
Correct.
Right.
Because those aren't necessarily parallel.
Okay. 76-3H has to do with primarily fast food drive-through stacking. We're reducing the stacking requirements from 15 to 10 spaces. We find that this is consistent with, with a lot of the zoning ordinances of the, kind of the peer communities that we look at and the research that we did into not only what the fast food places are looking for from their own operational standpoint, but also we did a windshield survey where we, we actually went out and kind of looked at some of our local fast food places right around the lunch hour on a weekday and made a determination that, that they never even get close to 15 stacking spaces in the drive-through, which I think any of us who go through the drive-through can probably appreciate. If you've got 15 cars in head of you, you're probably going to go somewhere else. So in an effort to reduce impervious surface that would be required based on that standard, we're, we're shrinking it from 15 to 10 stacking spaces. We're also adding a provision that regardless of how you design the, the drive-through, there has to be a means to circulate around the rear of the building without getting kind of caught in the drive-through operation. And this came up specifically for those of you that, that weren't involved in this conversation directly. This came up with Tim Horton specifically, and if you can picture Tim Horton's drive-through, there's no way to get around the back of that building without kind of getting yourself stuck in the drive-through whether you want to be or not. And so the idea with, with the language that we're proposing to add is, one way or another, you've got to be able to get around the back of the building without finding yourself committed to the drive-through if you didn't want to be there, or if you see the drive-through and it's longer line than what you had in mind and, you know, just don't have time to wait for your coffee that long, you have an opportunity to, to do otherwise. That's what we're trying to accomplish there.
Or the fryer broke and you're sitting there waiting for your fries to go a long time, you need to go.
Yeah, like at a, like at a car wash, same thing. You have the ability to go, get out of the lane, go down the side of the car wash, if for whatever reason, your car wash is busted. Makes sense.
76-3I, another one where we're doing our best to clarify. Right now we have standards, use standards within Tab 4 for an automobile or vehicle dealer, but then within the use standards for open-air businesses, there's specific standards for outdoor display of vehicles or for an automobile dealer. So what we want to do is have standalone standards for an automobile or vehicle dealer, pull those standards out of the open-air business standards, just so they're all in one place, and if you are looking to open an automobile dealer, you wouldn't, you would know to just go to the standards for an automobile dealer and not, you know, get, get tripped up by not seeing the standards as they pertain to automobile displays that are currently contained within the open-air businesses. So the, essentially the standards stay the same, it's just kind of moving them into their appropriate spot so that there's no confusion when looking at either one. 76-3J has to do with clarifying our current standards for dumpster enclosures. Right now the language states that a dumpster enclosure must be screened per the standards of section 511, which is our landscaping section. We wanted to be more specific and cite the specific sections of the landscaping standards that would apply to a dumpster enclosure, so 511-1, 511-3, 511-4. Because our landscaping section of the zoning ordinance is pretty, pretty intensive, and if what you're looking for is just what would pertain to a dumpster enclosure, we think that being more specific would be, would be helpful. And.
Well, it gives it developer a little more flexibility, if I remember right, didn't it?
Yes. It gives discretion to the Planning Commission, because there's a lot of different ways to do a dumpster enclosure. It might be attached to the building, it might be in the back of the parking lot, it might be screened just the way the building is oriented. So we didn't want to be as strict as to say you have to do these landscaping standards for a dumpster enclosure, just because there is so many different ways to do it. So we wanted to keep the language in the zoning ordinance that currently exists that says the Planning Commission has the discretion to require landscape screening around a dumpster enclosure. But what we're, the amendment we're proposing is, if the Planning Commission does require landscaping, here's the sections within our landscaping requirements that would pertain to it. Those sections have to do with the type of species you can use, the way it has to be maintained, those sort of specific requirements within the overall landscaping requirements. And the last one is pretty simple but necessary. Right now, in section 7.5 of the zoning ordinance, it goes through the different reasons that you would be required to get a land use permit from the township. One of those reasons that's not currently including is if you were looking to demolish a house, which you, in Heartland Township, you are required to get a land use permit for a house demolition. So we just wanted to make sure that that was noted in the zoning ordinance under section 7.5 as it pertains to land use permits. And that is all of them.
Any other questions? Not a question, I'd just like to add for the record that there was one additional amendment that I failed to announce at the beginning of the meeting, and that was 7.5 demolition to land use permit provisions. Any other questions or such?
So just so I, if I could ask a question, Mr. Chair. Just so I'm clear, we've got the change to add the, make sure I, Pollution Incidents Protection Plan to both automobile repair major and automobile repair minor, and within you would be required to get a land use permit from the township. One of those reasons that's not currently including is if you were looking to demolish a house, which you, in Heartland Township, you are required to get a land use permit for a house demolition. So we just wanted to make sure that that was noted in the zoning ordinance under Section 7.5 as it pertains to land use permits. And that is all of them.
Any other questions?
Not a question. I'd just like to add for the record that there was one additional amendment that I failed to announce at the beginning of the meeting, and that was 7.5 demolition to land use permit provisions. Any other questions or such?
So just so I.
If I could ask a question, Mr. Chair.
Just so I'm clear, we've got the change to add the, make sure I. Pollution Incidents Protection Plan to both automobile repair major and automobile repair minor. And within the use standards for recreation facilities, make sure that the language as it pertains to both indoor and outdoor recreation access, essentially make sure that language is identical. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:29. And I ask, are there any further questions?
What's that noise? That's.
You're alarm right at the.
Well, we're right on time. Now you have three seconds to do. If you are so inclined, I'm looking for Dave's motion. Do you have it?
It's on the back of the overall memo dated October 17th, although I guess they're all dated October 17th.
Yeah. I would move to recommend adoption of zoning ordinance amendment number 76-3A through K as contained in attachments with the condition that the two minor changes are incorporated into them that were discussed tonight.
A second of that. Okay, we have a motion to recommend adoption of the zoning ordinance amendments discussed this evening from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 7A, Heartland Township Planning Commission Calendar. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yeah, I just followed the kind of same procedure that we do each year, look at the holidays and look at the school calendar and put together this list of meeting dates and send them to Chairman Fox and to Plan Director Campbell and his staff.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
The one thing that we felt obligated to point out is, and I don't know how you ever avoid every potential religious holiday, but it's worth pointing out that Rosh Hashanah occurs September 24th to 26th, so our September 25th meeting would be within that window. And Hanukkah is December 16th through the 24th, so a meeting on December 18th would fall within that holiday.
Have we dealt with those in the past? I don't think.
I don't know how you avoid those ones that are for several days like that.
Okay.
And I say that recognizing that moving, certainly the December 1 moving that one week either way would, probably would likely conflict with other holidays, so there's.
Yeah, Christmas might be.
Right.
What's the outlook, Dave? What's your opinion on the outlook for 2014 as far as our busy schedule? Are we going to be similar schedule to 2013, or do you think we'll have more activity?
I'd like to think we have more activity. I think from what we're hearing from our friends over at Ramco, they seem to think that 2014 is going to be their year to see some, some real movement over there.
Yeah. Which is exactly the year they projected, like about three ago. They said you're going to have to wait till 2014.
Right.
Okay. Do we approve this with a motion? I'm trying to recall.
Oh, I don't remember what we.
Do you know if.
In looking back, I feel like I looked back in the 2013 and there was a motion.
There was?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess we entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion then to approve the projected planning commission dates for year 2014 as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, motion carries. No. Item 8, no public, so the Vino call to the public. Item 9, planners report.
Thanks again. Looking at what we have in the pipeline right now, I'm not sure if we're going to have a meeting in the first week of November. That would be our November 5th meeting, but stay tuned on that. That could change. Town and Country Animal Clinic did submit a site plan for their animal clinic at Progressive Drive, excuse me, not November 5th, November 7th. It's the board that meets on the 5th, and we are scheduled to meet on the 7th. I'm just not sure if we will. The animal clinic at Progressive in M59, they submitted, they need to do some revisions and resubmit, but hopefully we'll see that one soon enough. Speaking of Ramco and the potential for new development, they do have a potential buyer for one of the outlots over there for a new use, and they came in with some concept plans. I don't know that the use is necessarily, if they're looking to make that public knowledge yet, but just so you're aware that hopefully in the near future, we'll be seeing some, some plans under review for a new development within Heartland Town Square. At the, our last meeting, you saw the Village Streetscape Concept Plan and the Development Guidebooks. Both of those are going to go to the Township Board on November 5th for their review. You may have noticed that, or heard that Bagel Express unfortunately went out of business within Fountain Square, and that's never good news. I suppose the bright side may be that what we're hearing is there's already a new tenant who's looking to move in there. So I guess if there's a bright side, it's that there's quick turnover apparently. For those of you familiar where the Detroit Presbyterian property is, on the south side of M59, essentially between the Autumn Woods Residential Development and San Marino Development, there's nine acres in between there that was always envisioned to be a future Detroit Presbyterian Church. That didn't happen, and so the Presbyterian has sold that property, and the sale did go through, and we know that the buyer is interested in doing some single-family residential in there. So another one to stay tuned on. And that is everything that's on my list.
Is there, is there an opportunity for like a multifamily district right there? I can't recall what that's zoned for.
It's zoned PD, which gives you a lot of options. This particular buyer, what he does is a single family. That's what he does. He's a developer slash builder, so.
Yeah, okay.
Item 10, committee reports, anyone? All right. Item 11, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye, motion carries. Thank you, and have a good evening.